Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request of speak form available in the front entrance of the council chamber presented to the city clerk speakers. Physically present will be called upon at appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. I'm going to go and call this meeting to order. City of Grand Terrace, Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. The invocation will be given by Pastor Carlos from Church of Fire and Christ, and I'll be leading the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand and join us.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead and place your right hand over your heart.
I'm now just praying.
Oh, the prayer? Okay. Just bow your heads and close your eyes as I open up in prayer. Father in heaven, we just thank you on this night, Lord. I ask you right now, God, that you would just fill this place, Father God. Fill this place, Lord. I pray, Lord, for your peace, your unity, God, between these men and women. I pray, Lord, that you would release wisdom, God, upon the leaders of this community. Father, they need you, Lord. It's hard to carry the weight of the city, God, the problems, Lord, the situations, circumstances, God. And I just pray, Lord, that you would just give them what they need on this day, Father. Help them to run this city, God, in the best way, Lord, with your wisdom, with your guidance, God. Lord, we all need great leaders, and I pray that you would just fill them on this night, Lord. I pray that every situation and everything that is mentioned and talked about, God, will come to a peaceful resolution, Father. We love you on this day. Thank you for everyone that showed up here tonight, God. Bless them, Lord. Protect their families and their homes, God. Watch over our community, Father God, in Jesus' name. Amen. Oh, okay. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Carlos. Now you can tell everybody you're the first one to do the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, so we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, can we have a real call, please?
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
I am here.
Mayor Protem Sabino?
Here.
Mayor Hesse?
Here.
May we have a quorum?
Thank you. Item A, reorder of additions or removing any items from the agenda. Do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
Okay. Item B, public comment. This is an opportunity for the members of the public to comment on any item not appearing on the regular agenda because of restrictions contained in California law. The city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask questions for clarifications. The mayor may also request a brief response from the staff to questions raised during the public comment. I may request the item B agendas for a future meeting. Do we have any public comment?
Chuck Hornsby?
Chuck.
I live at 22594 Eden Drive here in town. I think the first thing to take into account in our current situation regarding immigration is that Donald Trump has no moral compass and can't act with any moral authority. Donald Trump is about one thing, Donald Trump. We should have, as any country should have, an efficient and orderly immigration system. The fact of the matter is, we don't. Another simple fact is that for the better part of half a century, we have rolled out the welcome mat for undocumented immigrants. This is because they will work for low pay doing the jobs that most Americans will not. Many of those jobs, though not at all prestigious, are very important. By that, I mean, you probably like to have food on your table. Another appeal to many in the business community is that undocumented immigrants are prone to being taken advantage of. This is a poor reflection on us, not them. The current state of affairs in Los Angeles is exactly what Donald Trump should have expected and, in my opinion, what he hoped for. No doubt, he is smiling ear to ear right now, though out of the public eye. He promised repeatedly during his campaign that his administration would be going after the criminals that were here illegally. Over the past four to five days, ICE went to many workplaces, the Garment District for one in LA, and also many Home Depot parking lots. Home Depot is where many undocumented people find work for the day. The key word there is "work." And oh, by the way, the people who hire them are mostly American citizens. If you belong to the undocumented community, how would you be feeling right about now? However you feel, these people live amongst us, and the great majority are good, hard-working people, living law-abiding lives. Donald Trump would have you believe otherwise. He was way out of line sending in the National Guard without first consulting Governor Newsom. He was even farther out of line sending in 700 active-duty Marine soldiers into Los Angeles from Camp Pendleton. But there is a strategy to it, a method to his madness, so to speak. He's getting used to it. It's been a very successful strategy for him throughout the last decade. He constantly does things that are clearly wrong and has a knack for people getting used to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to close public comment, and we have a special presentation from San Bernardino County Transit Authority, Measure I presentation by Louis. Louis, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. My name is Louis Vedari. I'm with the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, better known as SBCTA. Tonight, I want to provide a brief overview of the role SBCTA and especially Measure I plays in delivering transportation projects in the city of Grand Terrace as well as county-wide. SBCTA is the regional transportation planning agency within San Bernardino County's 24 cities, towns, and five supervisory districts. We were established in 1973 as the San Bernardino Associated Governments, the county's Council of Governments, a role we still play to this day. And we were designated the county's chief transportation planning agency in 1989. Our governing board consists of representatives from those 24 cities and towns, including the mayor here, and as well as the five county supervisors. Amongst our primary duties, SBCTA is the administrator of Measure I funding. Measure I plays a pivotal role in funding, planning, and delivery of transportation projects throughout San Bernardino County. I'd like to play a quick video for you right now.
San Bernardino County is on the move, and it's thanks in large part to Measure I. First approved by voters in 1989 and again in 2004, Measure I is a half-cent sales tax dedicated to improving transportation across the county. And over the years, it's delivered real results. From extending the SR-210 freeway from LA County into Redlands to easing congestion and cutting commute times, Measure I has made travel safer, more convenient, and faster for everyone. In our cities and neighborhoods, Measure I dollars have improved traffic signals, upgraded interchanges like SR-60 and Central Avenue in Chino, and repaved local roads like Niskewali Road in Victorville, keeping local streets running smoothly. For public transit riders, Measure I brought the introduction of MetroLink to San Bernardino County, expanded bus routes, the introduction of zero-emission bus and train options, and more accessible transit, connecting more people to jobs, schools, and health care. And it doesn't stop there. Measure I also supports bike lanes, pedestrian safety, and planning for future mobility, all while boosting our local economy by creating jobs and supporting construction projects across the region. What's another great thing about Measure I? It's locally controlled. That means San Bernardino County and city leaders decide how funds are spent rather than being directed by outside agencies. Because of Measure I, transportation in San Bernardino County isn't just keeping up, it's moving forward. Moving forward together with Measure I.
A little history about Measure I. As the video indicated, it's countywide half-cent sales tax originally passed by voters in 1989 to fund transportation projects from 1990 to 2010. It was overwhelmingly renewed in 2004 to extend funding from 2010 to 2040. Since 2010, Measure I has raised more than $2.5 billion for transportation projects. It's contributed more than $700 million for local streets, roads, sidewalks, pothole repairs, and traffic signals. And combined with state and federal funds, Measure I has helped deliver $2.9 billion in regional projects. And most significantly, Measure I has helped contribute to the creation of more than 32,000 jobs. And these figures do not include contributions Measure I makes to public transit agencies such as OmniTrans and MetroLink, as well as senior and disabled specialized transit services. Some of the significant regional projects Measure I has contributed to are the State Route 210 extension, Interstate 215 widening, interchanges such as SR-210 Waterman, I-215 University, I-10 Alabama, I-10 University, the Redlands Rail Project Aero Service, and most significant to Grand Terrace, the Interstate 215 Barton Road Interchange Project. The Barton Road interchange reconstruction improved freeway access and made safety and traffic flow improvements to local nearby streets and signals such as Michigan, La Crosse, and Vivienda. Some other examples of contributions to local projects are the contributions by Measure I to local projects are the 215 Mountain Vernon Avenue Interchange and Washington Street Bridge Project, as well as pavement improvements on streets such as Barton, Locadina, Vivienda, Van Buren, Palm, and many others. One of the key components of Measure I, as passed by voters, was the inclusion of taxpayer protections. Among those are an independent taxpayer oversight committee to provide citizen review and oversight to ensure funds are being spent as taxpayers intended. A cap of 1% of Measure I funds can be used for administrative overhead. And Measure I funds are regionally allocated based on a return-to-source model, which provides a reliable funding stream for the city for transportation projects. As we're seeing some of the budget issues at the state and federal level, these taxpayer protections ensure that taxpayer money is being spent the way voters intended. We're pretty proud at SBCTA of our track record of delivering projects with efficiency and cost-effectiveness to residents. Finally, as we look to the future, we want to identify the needs of residents and want to ensure what you believe matters is included in our planning process. We ask you to register your opinion in our Measure I survey at goSBCTA.com/measureI and let us know what's important to you. This is a collaboration between our agency, the leaders of the cities and the county, as well as the residents. As we look forward, we want to make sure that we have as much resident input. As things rapidly change, as we place more emphasis on transit options and emerging technologies, we'd like to get as much public input as possible, and we hope to do so. Be happy to answer any questions. That's all I have.
Does the council have any questions? Well, I have some highlights. I'm on the committee, and I will tell you one thing, since being on this committee for SBCTA, your money is not going to waste on this tax. There are so many check and balances, it's not like Sacramento. They actually, you see improvements here, and it's accountable. And the staff, you know, very professional there, and we go through everything on the fine-tooth comb. But one thing, I had a resident come up to me today in a roundabout that, you know, Measure I built. But you know what's missing that roundabout? And she brought to my attention is one of those big American flags. Do we have any money left over for that roundabout? Because I like to see a big pole in there with an American flag on that thing.
That is definitely something I'll look into.
Okay, if you could look into it, because I'll bring it up to the board thing. But it'd be great to see, because we're the first city going into San Bernardino County from Riverside County. And like what Chuck here, I mean, we're Americans, and we're proud to be an American and stuff. So it'd just be beautiful to see. But yeah, the tax dollars are definitely not being wasted. You see the improvements here, and when SBCTA did this, it's so that our county can get some structures and repairs here instead of waiting for Big Brother up in Sacramento. So we're definitely, you guys are on track for that, and I wish you the best. I'm not a tax guy, but I believe in paying taxes when I see a result, and I'm seeing a result from this measure right here. And our freeways are being used a lot, and you know, it's just our transportation. I mean, remember back in the days, you used to be able to go to the beach in an hour. Now it takes you a long time, two hours, if you're lucky. But yeah, so we're California, we love cars. And also, the MetroLink works well and OmniTrans. So thank you for coming out, Louis. And does the council have anything they want to highlight? Councilman Wilson?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for your presentation. Has there ever been any consideration over the last 50 years or so? Because I think I remember something about secondary access in event of emergency. And since we have, you know, the freeways with the overpasses and underpasses and all the rest of it, at one point, you know, realistically, we see an awful lot of traffic that runs from Loma Linda and the rest of it down through our city, and we're keenly aware of the fact that we have a double-wide road. And it, of course, leads on to Mount Vernon or, you know, Glen Garden, whatever. But I do know that if anything seismic happens out here, those freeways aren't going to be as fun as everybody thinks they are.
Right. Well, currently, we're actually in the midst of completing a study on the I-15 through the Cajon Pass. If a significant seismic event happens, it would basically bifurcate the county from the desert to the valley. We are looking at other options along our freeways, but first up is going to be looking at the Cajon Pass region. But it is something that we were studying. I agree with you. Fortunately, down here in the valley, you have major arterials that afford you an alternate route if something like that happened. But you know, the high desert would be completely cut off. They'd have to come through Yucca Valley, 29 Palms. But it's something that we are studying. It is on our radar, and we are planning for it.
Can I, real quick, to add on that? Because we just discussed that intact on Tuesday. So SBCTA is working with, and they're in the high desert now, they will work with each city in the county and look at evacuation routes out of the city, and not just the routes, the timing, the load, what the streets can handle. And then, once all those are compiled, they're going to do a county-wide, region-wide evacuation. Because it doesn't really good for us to evacuate into Colton if Colton is trying to evacuate into Rialto. So they are working on that. It's going to be a year or two, but they're starting that program on a county-wide evacuation.
Yeah, and those plans are a function of our council of governments. So we serve a dual role. So you get twice as much, so you know, more bang for your buck. But the city manager is correct.
Any other questions? Okay, well, can you tell us anything about the Bright Line going to Vegas?
Yeah, the last step that we received was they've already broke ground in the Nevada region. The anticipated completion by the 2028 Olympics seems to be a little stretched at the moment. They originally thought they would be in early 2028, but it looks like it might not be till either late 2028 or 2029. That is a private project in collaboration with Caltrans and SBCTA on right-of-way and connecting it to the MetroLink line in Ranch Cucamonga. It's, as I said, a privately funded project. There are private activity bonds as well as federal grants that are supporting it. It's a fantastic project. And speaking of the Ranch Cucamonga MetroLink station, it'll be the confluence of Brightline West, MetroLink, a future autonomous subsurface tunnel from the station to Ontario Airport, as well as a transit hub for OmniTrans and Foothill Transit, et cetera. So it's going to be one of the most state-of-the-art and complete transit stations in, perhaps in the nation, but certainly in California. We're proud of the innovations and partnerships that SBCTA has conducted. I believe I had mentioned before the Redlands Aero Service Project. We're going to be launching here soon the first zero-emission, self-powered hydrogen train in North America, right here in San Bernardino County. The state is already pursuing ordering another dozen or so of those same trains that we have yet to place and service. The technology is so innovative. So we're happy and proud of the work that we do.
Thank you. Councilman Allen?
Thanks for that report. It was really interesting, and I'm very excited about this hydrogen train, you know, that we have.
And it looks cool, too, right?
No kidding. Yeah, it really does. Very, very nice. But what I want to ask you about is the hydrogen itself. Is there going to be a production facility here, local, or are you going to have a storage facility? And I'm asking that because I would very much like to see more hydrogen availability for consumers for, you know, the standard autos and trucks that are coming on the market with hydrogen. But it's so far away, you have to go to get it.
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the challenges. We are in construction of a storage facility at our maintenance facility in San Bernardino, where the trains are maintained and stored next to the Santa Fe Depot. That's where they will get refueled. You're right, the challenges of shipping in, producing hydrogen locally and shipping it in, it's sort of a trade-off. Right now, you know, we're working with the best technology, the best supply availability that we can. We're also working towards cleaner hydrogen. Right now, it's sort of a mid-grade hydrogen, but we're working for that, you know, shipping in that more greener produced hydrogen. But as you pointed out, it's, you know, the production facilities just aren't local. So hopefully, the supply and production will catch up with our technology.
And OmniTrans also has three hydrogen buses, and that's the biggest thing, is the facility distribution. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, we thank you for coming out, so make sure Dr. Wood, before he retires, we get that flagpole up there. And I want to give props to Lisa from Three Bs for stopping me at Stater Brothers and asking about that. My wife said, "What took me so long at Stater Brothers?" That always happens. But thank you, sir, for coming out.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
All right. Consent calendar. Oh, is there any public comment on the special presentation?
No, sir.
Okay. Consent calendar. All consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They'll be acted upon in city council any one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen has been requested remove the item of the consent calendar for discussions. And so is there, we don't have any items removed from consent calendars, so I'm looking for a motion and a second.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, before we go, that item three has to be reclusive from check number 82388 for reimbursement, $50 for reservation at Richard Rollins Park, and check number 82442 for $359.85 for reimbursement for April health insurance. So we have a second and a first. Say, Attorney, you have anything?
Yes. Mr. Allen, you want to go first? Oh, okay, sorry. All right. So there are three ordinances on the consent calendar. I did want to note, just for the record and for the council, under item four, we have the fireworks ordinance, we have the regular ordinance, and then we have an urgency ordinance. The regular ordinance, if adopted tonight, will take effect in 30 days, which would be after the Fourth of July. And we figured, you know what, because of the fireworks, because of the health safety issue related to that, we were recommending adopting an urgency ordinance that would be effective tonight, once adopted, and would be in effect for the upcoming Fourth of July. So the ordinance, the text of the ordinance is the exact same, except we have urgency findings in the urgency ordinance. So I just wanted to note that for the record.
Okay. And we're not taking away fireworks from the residents?
That is correct. We are simply doing the...
I just wanted to make sure, because that goes around.
Yes. Okay, so with that, I will read the title of the three ordinances.
Okay.
The first ordinance is in item four. It is the regular ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, amending Section 8.112.180, establishment of a no-firework safety zone of Title VIII, health and safety of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which amends the city's fireworks regulations. Again, that ordinance, if adopted tonight, will take effect in 30 days. The next ordinance is also an item four. It is an urgency ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, approving an amendment to Section 8.112.180, establishment of a no-firework safety zone of Title VIII, health and safety of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code, which amends the city's fireworks regulations and declaring the urgency thereof, and that it shall take effect immediately. And for adoption of this ordinance, it requires a four-fifths vote. Lastly, we have the ordinance included in item number five. That is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Grand Terrace, California, levying special taxes within the city of Grand Terrace Community Facilities, District Number 2025-1, Public Maintenance Services. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion by Mayor Protem and a second by Councilman Allen. Please vote.
Motion passes. And just for the record, there's no public comment either on this item.
Okay, you're testing me, huh? I forgot to check that off. I had to keep you on your toes, Daisy. I did that on purpose.
I know, thank you.
I did catch the first one, though. All right. Closing consent counter, item E, public hearing for 2025-2026 Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District 891, presented by Ms. Tillman.
Good evening, city council. Shanita Tillman, Senior Management Analyst. The staff report before you supports the following goal. Goal number one, ensure our fiscal viability by ensuring appropriate cost recovery for The district was established in 1989 to manage developments and ensure sustainability. Track 14264 and Track 14471 were annexation number one. These were the first developments to be incorporated into the district. Over the years, we've had five additional annexations, bringing the total number to seven. Zones one through three, established before Proposition 218 in 1996, do not have annual increases to adjust these rates. A Proposition 218 vote is required. In the meantime, general funds are used to cover any costs exceeding annual costs. The following is the proposed assessment for Zone Number One. Canal, the proposed assessment is, sorry, I wrote it bigger because I couldn't see those. Zone Number One, $282.33. For Track Two, Forest City, Phase Two, $1,415.64. Zone Three, Oriole, $197.03. Zone Four, Greenbrier, $33.04. Zone Five, Palomino, $124.44. Zone Six, Jaden, $884.85. And lastly, Zone Seven, Tesoro/Van Buren, $27.51. The proposed assessment for fiscal year 2526 is $28,571.55. Staff's recommendation is the adoption of a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report, ordering the levy and the collection of assessments. And I am free for any questions.
The council have any questions? Councilman Allen?
Hey, we were just kind of wondering here, why is there such a stark difference between the assessments on some of the parcels and the different developments?
It's going to be based on what is in that development. So some locations have landscape that requires more maintenance. It has, some locations also have watering and light poles. So it just varies based on what is actually in that track.
Did I answer your question? I see your wheels...
I guess what I would need to know is what those items are that's adding so... I guess what I would need to know is what those items are that's adding so much to those parcels as opposed to the ones that are like twenty-seven dollars, you know? And then there's the others that are in the hundreds. I thought all of them, since it's the landscaping lighting, does not every one of these developments have lighting?
They all have lighting, but some-
And landscape, yeah.
Not, not necessarily. They, they do differ as to what is in each, in each track. And if you were to look at the different maps, it would identify the elements that are necessary that have to be funded by this assessment. But for the ones, like for instance, Jaden, that's one of our newer assess, our newer tracks that was added into the district. And part of it is just the cost and the size of that track that requires more maintenance. That actual track has a whole green space that is kind of into two different sections, and that alone is a lot on watering. And watering has also increased the cost of water. And in past years, if I may add, in past years, you can see the difference between what these residents paid last year, which is two thousand. There are certain years where the city is trying to improve that kind of green space. So, last year, more funds were requested, whereas this year, we are just trying to maintain. So, we didn't request the maximum that could be requested.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So, there's a set limit on what can be requested?
Yes. There is a minimum and then a maximum, but it's, it's based on CPI.
So, we're not doing this to collect any money from the city?
No.
Okay. Because I don't want rumors going that they're raising taxes and trying to get money, because that's what usually happens.
No.
Okay. Well, we know that. I just got to put it out there. So, um, okay, is there any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll close the, the public hearings. Does the council have anything else to bring on this item? So, basically, it's the same thing every year, but prices have gone down on some of them.
Yes.
And like Councilor Allen, it is a shocker when you see twenty-seven compared to six-seventeen, because I've been by there and I remember when they opened up that other track, and I think Mr. Duffy was here. And it's pretty big green space and they have a lot of work that needs to be done. And I think they weren't doing the weeds or something, so we had to get on the contractors about doing that and maintaining it.
The water wasn't connected at one point, so that, that-
So, they had issues, but all that's worked out now?
Yes.
I mean, it's a beautiful project. And usually, when they do this, is this because of the, the contractor didn't want to absorb the bills, or he just, he put this on to the homeowners? Is that what happened?
Can you repeat that question?
So, when, you know, like when housing developments, just like over there in Spring Ranch and, and High Grove, I know they pay extra taxes to maintain that service. So, the tax, or the homeowner's got it, the homeowners, the consumer always has to pay the bill. But is there a difference between the contractors could absorb that whole cost versus the homeowners paying this every year?
No. What that is, is the, the annual ongoing cost to maintain it. And so, since this serves the landscaping for those houses, it's not fair to have the remainder of the residents in the city pay for that. Therefore, these residents in front of these places pay for their own maintenance.
Exactly. So, I just wanted to get that out there, too. So, um, thank you. So-
And for transparency, if you look at the line item that mentions general benefit contribution, there is still a portion that the city is responsible for covering for this track. And that is, there's a portion in that track that the general population benefits from not just solely these properties.
Okay. Well, thank you for your, so, do I have a motion in a second for this?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion second. City Attorney, do you have anything?
No, just for clarification, the motion is to adopt staff's recommendation.
Okay. So, a motion and a second to adopt staff recommendation. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. So, item F, unfinished business none. Item G, new business, community benefit fund grant award for Titan, amount of five-hundred dollars, Christine Clayton.
Good evening, council. Christine Clayton, Finance Director. So, the city received a community benefit fund application from the Titan Strikers FC requesting five-hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five. And Tommy Rivero and Joseph Van Kampen are here to speak on behalf of the organization.
Do I have to listen to Tommy again? I mean, the only time I listen to him, he wants something. All right. I guess so.
Yeah, I'm here to help.
Or he calls ball strikes. I mean, I still remember that thing. Go ahead, Tommy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Name is Tommy Rivero. I'm one of the managers of the club team under Grand Terrace Community Soccer umbrella. This year, for the first time in a long time, in the works, they've gone to a competitive division, which is essentially a travel ball team. And with the season fastly approaching in September, a lot of upfront cost is approaching and deadlines are approaching, and it's a big burden on the parents that we have now. Right now, we're at two teams. Ninety percent of our kids live here in Grand Terrace, but all the kids play under Grand Terrace Community Soccer, and now they're just transferring to a more competitive level. You know, essentially, they're all-stars, and now, like I said, they're becoming travel ball. So, this is something that the league wants to continue to grow. You know, we're, we're up with two teams now, and hopefully, by next year, there'll be more teams. But like I said, with the cost approaching, you know, it's uniform season, ref fees, tournaments, stuff that registration fees don't cover, so anything that we can get is, is a big help to us.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Sorry. Tommy, forgot to mention that the community sports do work as we both stand here. I'd like to say as successful gentlemen that started in community sports here, playing against each other and on the same team. And now, we stand here together, coaching kids for the community. I do thank you guys for this opportunity to hear us out. I stand here as a proud coach, parent, and advocate for this team. We have been doing our best to fundraise through the community, leveraging, you know, sponsors that we have from the community local businesses, as well as doing dinner fundraisers, where we get a portion of the funds contributed back. We've also were able to participate in the Blue Mountain Festival event and had some booths there to help raise money for both our teams and for the club. And just to say, these funds do not just sit in account or pay the coaches. They're directly funded to supporting these athletes. We've been able to provide practice jerseys, soccer equipment, backpack, easy-ups for shade during these hot days, so that these players have this equipment and we're able to proudly support this city. But just as you guys all know, the journey doesn't end there, and we continue to plan ongoing fundraisers, including car washes, clothing drives, raffles, and restaurant nights. And we're just asking for the council's support through funding to help our clubs secure uniforms entering local competitive tournaments. And with your backing, we can expand our reach, engage more youth, and represent our city with pride at competitive levels. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Christine, item nine and ten is the same thing?
What for next year?
Is that for next year? Yeah.
There's one for this year and one for next year. So, the five-hundred dollars is for a tournament this month in June.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the Mayor Pro Tem just told me. I should have asked her, too. So, that's why she's on there. I got tunnel vision. Does the council have any questions? Councilor Allen?
So, my question is for you, and I would ask you this for about item nine and item ten. So, you mentioned that you, you've been working real hard fundraising in the community, and I'd like to know, just kind of briefly, what you've done, but more importantly, what I'd be curious to know is, what businesses in our community have sponsored you? I mean, have you got any names on any t-shirts yet?
Yeah, we have gotten some names on our shirts. Some of the local businesses has been Miguel's Junior.
Right on.
We did Mountain Mike's, which is a little bit outside, but they have a sponsor where they give you back money. We've had a hospice agency, as well as like a skilled nursing facility. Oh, and it's, sorry, that's my manager. It's Grand Terrace Printing.
I know how the manager spells, so, you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Keep me in line. But yeah, so we've had several, and we've asked, I feel like almost everyone from Loudburger, Grocery Outlet, Baskin Robbins has also helped.
Well, let me, let me offer this suggestion to you then, and I'll, I'll close out. But tomorrow morning at eight o'clock is the monthly Grand Terrace Chamber of Commerce meeting at Woody's. Eight AM, free coffee, and there's all kinds of business owners that show up in that meeting. I mean, I just suggest maybe, you know, come down there and, you know, see what you might be able to, interest you might be able to draw from there. But I appreciate you two gentlemen and you two ladies managers, man, doing this for this, for the youth. Oh, my. You know, you're, you're, you're really a blessing to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mayor Pro Tem?
I, thank you for mentioning that. I don't know if y'all remember, at the closing of last council meeting, I did bring up strikers who were at the Blue Mountain Festival, and I've actually been able to make the introduction to the chamber, so they are booked to speak there tomorrow. So, thank you, Councilmember Allen. I just want to thank you all for everything that you're doing in the community. My husband being a farm, former coach with Coach Mark over here. Our, our kids played together for community soccer, and so I understand the importance, one, of having a place where families can come together, where they can support our children. As a mother of a child who dances competitively, I understand that it's incredibly expensive, the, the financial burden, to be able to compete at an upper level. So, thank you for bringing this chapter to Grand Terrace. Thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for your, for your presentation today.
Anybody else? Well, so, yes, thank you. You guys done a lot. Were you at the parade? Did you march?
I wasn't there, no.
Well, then, the only way to approve this is if you're going to promise to march next year in the parade.
I'll be there. I'll be there with my little league.
Okay. Because we want the kids in the parade. We don't care about you, Tommy. We want the kids, okay? I mean, I'll, I'll walk with them if I have to.
That's a deal.
You know, thank you. And I know this city, the city manager's done a great job, you know, with the soccer field. I know we need it, but you know, it's fun, I mean, just doing a, that's the best I've seen that field in the three decades, you know, been here and stuff. And trying to maintain it, that's the whole thing. And then hopefully, you know, we'll get that other baseball field made. You know, we, we remember how it used to be before the high school took it, and then we were promised a lot, but, you know, unfortunately, but we just got to move forward on. So, I appreciate all the things you do for the kids here on the limited resources that we have. And, but yeah, I don't know about umpiring. You don't umpire anymore, do you? No.
Still do that, yeah.
But I don't remember, have you been sent as, to come out for your opening ceremonies? Because I don't remember getting any emails this last one.
It's always conflicting with the Blue Mountain Walk, so I'm going to have to, I'll push my opening ceremonies next year.
Well, you could do the Blue Mountain Walk and opening ceremonies on top of the hill if you want.
It requires you to be at two places at once.
Okay. Well, I could be two places.
I'll push it a week. I'll do it a week after.
Okay. There you go. But, you know, thank you. Do I have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. No public comment. I'm looking for a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move items nine and ten.
Second.
Okay. Item nine and ten, is that all right?
Well, I think we only did this as item nine, so I would just do item nine at this point.
So, we'll do item nine first, and we'll come back and speak real fast. We won't let these gentlemen speak again, because, you know, coaches, they can't be long, wouldn't it worse than politicians? So, okay, we have a motion for item nine. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Person's second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item ten.
Next time, I'll put them together.
Okay.
Council, Christine Clayton, Finance Director. The city received a community benefit fund grant application for the Titan Strikers in the amount of two thousand dollars, and this is for fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six, and their season starts July.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this?
No, sir.
So, Christine, so to change the public benefit fund, we need to put on there a signature that the youth will march in the parade? Otherwise, you don't get the money. Can we do that? City Attorney? No. You guys are always invited, but do, I know I have a motion from Councilor Brown for item ten. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Does the council have any questions before we vote? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Well, good luck on the all-star team, and we'll be looking forward. And send us a schedule, so we'll try to make it out there. All right? And don't forget about the chamber meeting tomorrow. Might be a good benefit for you. All right. Item H, future agenda items. At this time, the city council may propose items, discuss actions as a future duly-agenda city council meeting in consequence of the majority of the quorum. Does anybody have any future agenda items they want to bring up? No. So, I had to cut that fast, because item nine and ten were separated, so I wanted to save some time here. City Council Communication, Councilmember Matt Brown?
Nothing to report.
You don't want to talk about your experience out there of being a fireman for one day?
I'll, I'll post some photos on social media.
All right. Councilor Allen?
Okay. Thanks, Mayor. On May twenty-eighth, the day after our last council meeting, I attended the San Antonio County Homeless Partnerships Continuum of Careful Membership Meeting, and we had a, at that meeting, we, we got our monthly legislative report from the county lobbyist, and then we received a presentation from the city, from Mayor Aquanetta Warren and County Supervisor Ramandera's about what Fontana's doing for homelessness. And then we received a presentation on the strategic plan by the Homebase Consultant, and on the homeless, and a presentation on the Homeless Management Information System. The next day, on May twenty-nine, with the rest of you, I attended the Cal Cities Luncheon at the Burgess House in Redlands. That was a really interesting, great event. I'm glad I went to it. And later that day, here in Grand Terrace, I attended the Wellness Wonderland Health Fair at the Indian Health Clinic on Mount Vernon Avenue, and it was a very good event. And I really would encourage you, all of my colleagues, to look further into any events that they have in the future. They're very open to working together with the city on events and partnering with them and integrating more into the community, and I think that's a great thing. They have a great operation there going on, full-service health clinic for the Indian nations. So, on May thirty-one, which was the Saturday, I attended the Community Coalition for Change Healthy Grand Terrace Initiative, which was held over at the senior center. And they were awarding certificates of recognition to some of their leadership of their organization for what they've done here in Grand Terrace. And, you know, this is the group that is working very, very hard to enforce the state law about unflavored tobacco product is getting in the hands of minors. And we know that it's a real serious problem throughout the state. They outlawed it, but they didn't put any money behind it, the enforcement effort. And so, the Community Coalition for Change, bless their hearts, takes it upon themselves to fund these like quasi-undercover operations where they have youth who appear to be underage, but they're not, and they'll go into businesses and purchase tobacco products. Or they'll have, you know, and anyway, they work with law, local law enforcement. But here's the issue with that, the reason I brought it up is, they can only do that whenever there's money available to pay for the operation, you know, that, because special operations through the sheriff's department if they're, or the local city departments. And so, for example, the city of Colton passed a tobacco sales licensing fee just for those retailers who sell tobacco products, and that funds their enforcement of that law. just for those retailers who sell tobacco products, and that funds their enforcement of that law. 'Cause I can tell you that, I didn't realize it was such a problem until the vice principal of our high school showed me how, she collects product, these flavored tobacco products every day from the teachers who take them off the children in the classrooms, and the children don't try to hide it. They're very open about how they acquire these products from local retailers. And, and, and so I just would encourage us, I have talked about it in the past, asked for an agenda item to talk about having a licensing fee, and I just think something we need to consider, so that we too, 'cause she, I will tell you that some of those places are local where they're getting these things, okay? Now, also after that, enough on that, so the, the last thing I attended was that fire that we had here in Grand Terrace today. That was, that Engine 23, those guys were on it so good. Our fire department is to be commended. I, I mean, they were on that fire so fast, and then Colton and San Bernardino mutual aid up there, and I guess I probably counted six or seven Sheriff's Department cars. Amazing response. It was just incredible. Thank you to all of that, and, and I've got, I've got these great, this is for you. When it's your turn to present, you're welcome to use my video and pictures if you want to. That's all I got.
Well, thank you for representing us, and if you wanna think about that fee, I mean, I would suggest the future agenda for them, but now that those students, Margaret, I remember when she first came out here, I mean, it's for a high schooler to step up and try to get that done. She wasn't very popular at that high school, but she saw, she was trying to take care of the youth's health. And thank you for representing us. Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Had an opportunity, actually contacted the Metropolitan Water District back about four or five months ago or so, and got on their list to be able to participate in their inspection trip. And what that was made of, of is, you know, all the water that we use in California, a good percentage of it at least, comes from Oroville Dam, and so we traveled this far north. We flew up to Sacramento and stayed in a hotel up there, and then jumped on a bus, spent a lot of time on the road, toured the Lake Oroville Dam, as well as Feather River, Sacramento River, went all the way far south down to near San Francisco, where the, where the Sacramento River floods out into the Delta. It's different than the Nile River, where it, it basically flows out into a delta and goes out. Here, it goes in. And so the salinity is controlled by mixing water from other sources, and it makes it possible for us to have drinking water eventually. They process the water, and then it comes down to us, and so if you can imagine, it's a lot of, it's about 700 miles down to near where we are, and I know that because the California Water Resources Pipeline is right in front of my house, right in the road there. It's about 100 inches wide, and it flows right to the top. Got a chance to discuss things with an awful lot of very informed people. There were 36 people on the tour, and all of them were either connected with Western Municipal Water, one of our servers, or Metropolitan, got a couple of nifty hats, some nifty-looking sunglasses, but a lot of maps, a lot of production. Had a chance to hear the history. It was an extremely well-put-together tour, and it was, for an old guy, it was tough, but that's okay. When we got down to the delta and we walked around and saw all that stuff that they had, all the islands that they had built with hand labor back in the turn of the century, and they were dredging it with big bucket dredges and so on, and most of that stuff is gone now, but it's in a, in kind of a, an area, kind of a park area. Huge area where the water loses its salinity, and then makes it possible for us to be able to drink it eventually. And so the, the scale of these water facilities is enormous. I know the pipeline that crosses in front of my house eventually gets down to Lake Silverwood, then it comes from Silverwood underground all the way out to Lake Paris. And it's all part of the California Water Resources Board. It's, it's it's amazing that we have a contemplated sites reservoir. And the sites reservoir site, when you actually look at it, it's a humongous bowl, a natural bowl, and it's, it's got sandstone in the bottom of it for the time being. They're planning on crushing that sandstone and making a good bed for it. But when you stand there and put your hand on your forehead and kind of run around the hilltops, that's how big this thing is. It's just, it's enormous. And so that is going to be the other storage. You know, it's the biggest deal about water is, is that you either store it or you try to, you know, try to conserve it. But this water comes, in essence, a good percentage of it comes from hillside and mountain sides and so on, and all the tributaries from that area, and then also a lot of, a lot of stuff comes from the ocean. So if we didn't have this water supply, California would be even more of a desert than it is. And I urge you that if you get the opportunity to contact your legislators, be sure and let them know how much in support you are of this program. They're talking about a 40-year program to be able to get the sites reservoir online, and to continue getting our water supply stabilized. So finally, somebody's grabbed a hold of the reins and started this process, and they're supposed to be starting to move dirt sometime in 2026. So it's a, it's a, I've been involved in large grading projects, but this guy said he didn't know how much dirt they were gonna be moving. So it's, that means it's an awful lot. Anyway, it was a terrific experience. Got home on Sunday, and, you know, flew both ways, and then came down from San Jose, and although I was a little tired, you know, 'cause my arms, but anyway, it was, it was a terrific experience, and I really appreciate the opportunity, so, and we represented.
Thank you, Doug. Talk about water, I feel thirsty now, so. Mayor Pro Tan?
Thank you, Mayor. On June the 5th, I attended the Leader in Energy Summit, and that event is a culmination of the, those who are innovated in energy coming to the table was Southern California Gas, those in hydrogen and whatnot, and elected officials, and just talking about the future of what is to come with regard to different technologies, anywhere from the local municipalities and how they're utilizing energy to technology that we could be utilizing in this space. On June the 6th, I remotely watched the AQMD meeting. Thank you to Mayor Bill Hesse, who was actually the first person who was able to speak on behalf of the city, and for anyone who's not familiar with the amendment that had come before that board, it was 111 and 121, which stated that all homes in California would no longer be able to utilize gas heating for their homes and their water heaters, which then would have required a complete renovation in their homes, which, if anyone is familiar with the economic climate right now, which it, it would have just obliterated so many financially, so thank you again for doing that. I'm sure he'll talk more about that. It did not pass, and again, I'll leave that to the mayor to share with you. On June the 7th, the mayor and I also attended Living Word, who had a ribbon-cutting for a playground that they had installed on their property. They, the focus is health and getting the kids outside and re-socializing, so it was a blessing to be part of that. They do so much for the community. And last, just to bring up, and I'll be brief about what I want to say, is that a lot of the time, people will go to social media to report issues in the city, even if it's related to crime. Our sheriff's department is not monitoring 92313 pages. That's not a city page. Occasionally, I might come across something, or someone might reach out to me, but again, I am not law enforcement. By the time you get to me or anyone else on this dais with information, we lose the opportunity to stop whatever's happening in our community and on our streets. And so, again, as someone who's brought forth the, the essence of see something, say something, it, it's really important for the community to understand. If you have an issue that is a dire emergency, please call 911. If it is not a dire emergency, please call 909-387-8313. Going online and tagging a council member and asking how we're going to fix a problem 48 hours after it's occurred is a disservice to the community. It minimizes the safety of our families, of our retired community and our children, so again, i- if you have an emergency, see something, you say something. If you have the time to video-record it, you should be on the phone with our deputies. Please do not allow crime to have its foothold in our city. Thank you.
Very well said, yes. Please report it. One other thing on the Living Word dedication, the part beginning with you said, Conrad, they wanna open a gym, they wanna build a gym. I said, well, you have to go through all the proper paperwork, but they also wanna open up a school there. I think they said private? Private school, yeah. So that'd be a great addition to our city that, that goes through. And also, there's a grand opening this Saturday at Tender Pebble Floris. There's a florist in town right next door to Missoula, so at 10 o'clock, 10 AM, Saturday, they're having a grand opening. And don't forget about the chamber meeting tomorrow at 8 o'clock at Woody's. And, yeah, last Thursday, thank God I went, drove through LA on Thursday and not Friday, 'cause I went through, right through that area that had all that stuff happening, but I attended the SCAG meeting, and what we talked about there is, there's two things that was brought up. One, they talked about, you know, like every city, the affordable housing, so we had a gentleman who has a business in LA who makes modules that are actually stackable, and he makes high-rise apartments, and he's got contracts in San Diego. He can't get any in LA. But the cost for a one-to-three-bedroom apartment, and they're really nice, is anywhere from 235 to 285. So that's vice, you know, half a million, whatever, a million dollars per unit. So I'll bring, I'll send the council the presentation for that. But the only thing that's troubling in San Diego, they're trying to enhance their public transit, which is good, but all of these apartments, and you, you can tell they're stackables. I mean, it's just amazing what the designers and stuff did on this. And, but they're taking away parking to have more residential units, and then they're taking away street parking around the area, and then, but the bad thing, like, a block later, all the cars who live, you know, people that live there and have cars will park on that street, so now you're causing a public safety concern with traffic and, you know, kids on the street, 'cause I know in, in one of the schools, I think it was in LA, that a young man got killed in front of his father, 'cause he ran between two cars and got pinned. So that's another thing, so there's always a pros and cons on everything. And then we had a presentation from Riverside was the highlight city, and they have, I think she's a planner, but they're doing a lot of restructuring there, beautification in the old part of Riverside, a mission, by the mission, everything, and what they have is, of course Riverside's got a lot more money in Grand Terrace, but they're also going about, and I know, we talked about this before, a lot of the mom-and-pop businesses are the businesses who are owned by people from generation to generations, and the landlord's not putting any money in it to maintain the modernization of the businesses. They had grants for them to do that, i.e. grease traps and everything else, that were not, you know, where grandfather can no longer be grandfathered in. Air conditionings, you know, paint, siding. So they, they gave these grants to these businesses, and if the business took it, that was great. You know, I know they used, they're supposed to do that with the RDA money, but I don't think it ever happened. But they did it, and then if they didn't do it, 17 months later, they were out of compliance, and they were forced to do it. So that's something, you know, look into, but once again, a lot of the, the grandfather businesses that were there, the landlords really didn't care, because it was a tax write-off too. So we're on shaky ground on that, but, you know, it'd be nice if we had some kind of grant service to beautify our, our places. I, I know Grocery Outlet, they had paint and stuff and all that, you know, it's, it's looking better than what it did before, but it'd still be nice that our downtown be, you know, refurbished and, you know, as people drive into the heart of our city. And, so yes, I attended on Friday, went to Diamond Bar, drove to Diamond Bar for the Clean Air Commission. It was a packed house, they had overflow. Lot of council members were there, and we were supposed to have three minutes to speak. We had 45 seconds to speak, and then they, they went ahead and did the closed session before, so it was just adding more time. But I was very blessed to be the first one to speak, and I think that's the fastest I ever spoke, but I did talk about how we're the ones that had the problems with no power during our power outage. And Grand Terrace was also mentioned again by another county representative from Orange County, and we're being mentioned in Sacramento by that. So not only did we, you know, we, we highlighted about, you know, SBCTA opposed us, all the mayors in the Allen Empire opposed it. Our county, one of our county supervisors, Kirk Hagman, the mayor Pro Tan from Highland, who are on the SBCTA that were supposed to represent us, they voted no for this, 'cause they represented us, and which I was happy. Say, and then your, our county supervisor nailed it too, that not only the cost for the new, you know, to get rid of the gas appliance, but for the electric appliance, that's nice, but what's our biggest problem here in the state is the infrastructure. And when we saw that firsthand, all-electric in our senior apartment, that didn't fare very well. Especially when they have no electricity and right behind them have electricity. I'm talking to some residents who are redoing their, their panels, and some of the contractors are saying, hey, there could only be four people on this block to redo their panel, because the transformers can't handle the power. So there's a lot of what ifs, and then when you redo the, this power in here to bring in, you know, other appliances, you gotta change the gauge wires, the amps, so there's a lot of costs, and then, you know, then the transformers and everything else. So people don't think outside the box. They just think, hey, I want this appliance right here. Now, their biggest argument was, well, you can still get the gas appliance, but there's, after so many years, there's only gonna be 10%, and no, and if the company makes over a certain amount, it could charge an extra $500 for appliance. Well, they're saying for low income and stuff, but honestly, it hurts everybody. $500 is a, is a hurt in the pocket. Especially if your gas-water heater goes out, and it's gonna cost you, you know, three times as much. You know, nobody wants that to happen. It will happen, but nobody wants that. So we stood up, and it was a seven-to-five vote. Most of the ones who voted yes for it was out of LA, but the mayor of Riverside, she voted no. The county supervisor from our area, Kirk, he voted no, and our representative, the mayor Pro Tan from Highland, voted no on it. So the other ones, maybe, like I said, I'm sorry to go back, that they voted yes was in LA. But there's, there's a big cost. Now, they might look at it and bring it back. I, I don't see, because you can have pie in the sky and wish for everything, but we can supply enough power to, for electric cars. So this is a big thing, and like Councilmember Wilson here, when he went up to the delta, I mean, how many years did it take to finally realize that we need more water than what we have, and to build dams and reservoirs and stuff? I don't know why, but, you know, we'll put money on the bullet train that goes nowhere, and if we use that money for the bullet train for our infrastructure, this state would be even better. But anyway, I was happy with the turnout. When I got done, I had to leave, 'cause I had to take my grandfather to the VA, but we listened on the phone, and Mayor Pro Tan, I was talking to her, so they were on this agenda for three and a half hours. So that's how passionate and everything was, and, and, you know, the, the staff at the Clean Energy, you know, they did a good job, but then I look at, here we are, worried about the air, and then what happens? There's a riot in LA, and everybody's burning cars and batteries and stuff, so there goes all that clean air thing, right? So I, I don't understand. So I, I don't understand. So, um, but yeah, praise God, you know, it didn't pass, and, you know, families were able to still afford their gas appliances and, you know, and move forward on that. Um, yeah, so I didn't get to attend firefighter academy, and I know my two colleagues did. I'm surprised they didn't put their suits on to help you guys with the fire today, but, um, it looked like a good time. And, uh, believe me, I would have rather have been there than driving back and forth to LA and Diamond Bar the last two days, because like the, I didn't even know what date is, like the mayor, or like Councilmember Wilson said, I mean, traveling, traveling, we all travel. Everybody thinks that we just come here and do the city, so we're doing a lot of stuff. And most of it's, it's non-paid, but we do it to represent you guys, not only in our city, but in our state and local counties. So, um, I appreciate, and I appreciate the, you know, the fast response for the sheriffs and the firefighters putting that fire out for the families, it's a devastating thing, and hopefully everybody's all right, but now the time to rebuild. And I just, uh, I talked to Mayor Pro Tim, and she gave me guidance to talk to Josie for our county, um, utter for the tax. But I wrote our senator, and one of the biggest thing is the fire. So after a devastating fire, and you rebuild your house, what do you get hit next? You get hit with a higher property tax because it's getting reassessed. So maybe steps can be put in place where if you're the original owner and you just build the same square footage, you don't do any, you know, expansions, or you don't sell your property that, or revert back to the old property tax schedule that you had before the fire, because that could be devastating too, because you have people that's been in the homes for a long time. And, uh, that's all I have. City manager?
Other than to thank for the, the fire department's efforts today, well, well done. And we don't have anything else to discuss. It's your show, Gary.
All right. Well, thank you for the support for Fire Ops 101. I think it was a good, successful event. And obviously, today we did have a response. I want to praise the men and women of the fire department. They were there very quickly. Station 23, obviously, the Grand Terrace engine was first on scene, and then supported by the city of Colton, as well as our other BDC resources or district resources from the city of San Bernardino. So the fire, as you can see, started in the garage and then made its way into, through the firewall into the attic. We were able to salvage the majority of the home, but obviously with smoke damage and so forth. The good news is, is that nobody was injured. Red Cross was called out to support, and there was no injuries to any of the firefighters on scene. I will also say, you can see in that one photo right there, there was a large plethora of SO deputies that arrived on scene to help us with potential evacuations if this fire were to spread to surrounding homes. And they helped us block off the road and get lucky loos out of the area. So they were there in full contingency, so I, I appreciate the support. With that, I'd like to talk about one, one other thing real quick. Fire season is back. We've had our, we were having our first large incident in the county right now up in the desert. Fire starts, the, the majority of the fires this time of year start up in the desert. This one's making its way into the desert floor. It will probably be out by this evening, because that's what the fires do up there, but we are right back into fire season. Fire season has stopped at the end of January, and now we're here in June. So fire season is 20, you know, 365 days a year now, so be vigil, be vigilant. And we do, like I said, appreciate the support, and I appreciate Councilmember Allen and Councilmember Brown coming out to the Fire Ops 101. So I hope you guys had a good time. Thank you.
Uh, chief, what about residents, you know, because palm trees are rolling candles? And, you know, I'll talk to you about who it is, but does the fire department have anything to help the homeowners to clear those palm trees, or do they go and, you know, advise a homeowner he should take care of that palm tree? Because I'm talking palms, the leaves all the way down to the, the ground on a 18-foot palm tree. Is there any way we could do something about that to make sure we're protecting not only his house? I don't know why, but the other houses, surrounding homes?
Yeah, unfortunately, there is not when it's on private property. So for us, and we understand, the city of San Bernardino and the surrounding cities, they fell in love with palm trees, and palm trees, like, like we call them, they're flying kites of fire. So the moment that they catch on a fire, they're the ones that, that will move fire across the neighborhood very, fairly quickly. So we advise them, we talk with them, but we don't have any programs when it's on private property.
Okay, because I know up there in the mountains, you know, you have till, I think, Memorial Day to remove the pine needles?
Mm-hmm.
So I didn't know if they had the same type of system here, where if you see a, you know, a fire hazard tree, if we gave them any kind of, you know, not a citation, but you know, educate them to remove it? Because some people might not look at it like we look at stuff?
No, and I'm not sure if we do anything with code enforcement.
I don't, I don't know, because this is private property and this is behind, but you can see it and just catches my eye when I drive by there and stuff. I think about, just like happened today, you know, that goes up, you're going to take out four houses on this.
Absolutely.
So, all right, just a question. Thank you. Does Sheriff Department have anything?
Nothing to pass on, other than I'm happy to fill in for Lieutenant Fries tonight. He got activated in the Mobile Field Force. He's actually up doing evacuations with our Mobile Field Force in the Apple Valley area with the fire, supporting that operation and then preparing for protests and things for this weekend, so he'll be out of pocket for the rest of the week on that.
Okay, do they, so what the mayor Pro Tim talked about, that guy doing donuts over there by Calss Gate, was, does somebody call 911 that day?
Yeah, we did have a deputy response to that. In fact, I was talking to Sergeant Tabor about that before I came to the meeting. It seems we're having an uptick in responses due to out-of-area groups coming to Calss Gate, so I'm going to be talking to Lieutenant Fries about that. We're going to be looking into that problem and see if we can target something, some kind of enforcement or something to help mitigate those issues.
Okay, because one of the issues we had, I think, was it one or two years ago, Conrad, when we had a, they were going to grocery outlet and taking over that parking lot, and I know you guys responded for that, so.
Yeah, we had it about a year ago.
About a year ago?
Sheriff's gave some pretty, uh, pretty heavy response for those, and then they also were in Highland and ended up catching the guys involved in that in Highland.
Yeah, the incident at Calss Gate the other night actually spilled over into Loma Linda, and they had a response in Loma Linda to deal with and disperse the crowd.
So they catch them?
They did.
Okay. All right. So thank you, at least, you know, like we say, you know, see something, say something, please call 911. When in doubt, call it out. But that's why we're saying, you know, we, we support all our first responders, and, you know, hopefully we'll get additional first responders, because only when you're calling in the cavalry, you need the whole cavalry to come out. So we appreciate all the work you guys are doing, and you have fire season. I thought I smelt, smoked this weekend or something, I don't know, it kept, the wind kept changing, but yeah, it's, it's, uh, it's pretty dry out there. I hiked those hills and stuff, so, yeah. All right, do we have anything else, uh, city manager?
We do not, thank you.
City attorney, you have anything you want to add? Not going to say you're doing pro bono tonight? No? I'm trying, people, I'm trying to find money for us. Okay, so, closed session, uh, public employee discipline dismissal, release. Conrad, are you going somewhere? Anyway, we're having a closed session tonight, just joking, buddy. And if we don't see you, thank you. Remember that Woody's tomorrow at 8:00. If you chamber, it might help out your, uh, your youth programs. And if you can make it out to the grand opening at the florist area over there by Missouli's, and support our local businesses. Thank you, God bless, and good night. Okay, we're back from our closed session. City attorney, you want to add anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had one closed session item this evening under the heading Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release under Government Code Section 54957B1 and 54954.5E. Information was provided to the city council, discussion was had, there was no direction provided, no action taken.
Thank you. So the next regular city council meeting will be held July 8th at 6:00 p.m. Any request item to have placed on a future agenda must be made in writing, so we have a, there won't be any, any other council meetings until July 8th. All right? So thank you for everybody, let me see, thank you staff for all your hard work, and Daisy, you too, I'll go throw you in. Do you have any public comment? Okay. Thank you, good night.